Morning.
Oh, yeah.
Good.
Uh.
Good morning.
Hello.
That we got here. Yes, ma'am.
You want to. I'm. It's in progress. Yes, it is. But you're bothering me. Do you make meetings?
Look at that.
How'd that go?
It went well.
But. It's not a bar going center.
Uh huh.
I made that for like.
Wanted.
Thank you. I'll call him again. Yeah.
Morning. Morning.
What's up? I'm gonna hear you.
Yeah, I'm good. Get out of there. Uh. All right. Great.
Everyone. Thank you.
Morning. One thing. Good. I gotta be on my Asian fuse today.
Good night. Comforts and was saying. Yeah.
No, today.
We'll see. Right there. How you doing?
I was just saying. You guys good, all right? Yes, sir.
Okay, how are you, sir?
I'm doing well.
All right.
Thanks for the clarification, Eric.
You should probably quieten up.
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know. I was just. Okay. Okay, this thing.
Morning, how are you, Pam?
Right.
You're all right. Sorry I missed the meeting.
Oh, I knew you were gonna answer.
All right. On call, our commissioner court meeting to order. I've asked my friend. Billy Reed, the pastor of the Dallas County Cowboy Church to open us in prayer.
May you be glorified, Lord, in the proceeding to its place today within these walls beyond. May clarification ring true, may resolution be branded, and restoration and reconciliation be the outcome for those who are teaching. And may clarity prevail, giving way to wisdom and insight. May the force of decision be resolute and swift, not showing partiality for provision, comprehension, and completion. Through it all, may the concreted grace and mercy be woven into the fabric of justice. In a present thing of Jesus' pride, when you pray all these things. Amen.
Amen. All right, pledge the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pledge to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas. One state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. You may be seated. Uh. Is there anybody here that that wants to make public comments on agenda items? It's a, I didn't know. Make sure if you have, wanna make comments. Okay. Very good. So. Meeting come to order at nine oh three. We do have a forum present. Commissioner Pratt is out in training this week. Uh, is there any general announcements? If not, then are there any public comments, comments to be made on agenda items? If not, all right, we will move to consent agenda. The consent agenda items are considered routine by commissioners court and will be enacted in one motion. There's no separate discussion of these items unless the county judge commissioner. Request an item being removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. And with that, I would like to, item number A, consider uh. Dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the commissioner's court and approval for the same for October eleventh. Twenty twenty-three, we need to table that item because the minutes are not ready due to the elections. So, is there a motion to table that item?
Oh.
All right, is there a second?
Sure.
All of them favor say aye.
Uh huh.
All right. Is there a, a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda item?
So moved. I would like to discuss one.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, on the monthly reports.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I wanted to let everyone know, we do have all the reports for August and September. And at the last meeting, it was brought up on some that weren't in, and there was an error made on uh. JP two, their report was in. And it was stated that it wasn't in, and on the library, it was stated that one of their reports was not in, and it was, and that was in. So, that was a mistake on our part, and I wanted to let everyone know those, those departments did turn in the reports.
Thank you very much. I contacted the other, and I got the reports. Asked them to submit their reports, and we still have, I have a few more to get done. Uh, but we should, we're gonna say thank you, Commissioner Pearson, before that. So, is there a, a motion to approve the, is there any other discuss, discussion on the consent agenda items? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is a second?
Second.
All right, motion made, second. All of the favors say aye.
Uh huh.
All opposed like sign. Motion passes. Uh, item number five, discuss, consider Operation Green Light to recognize uh that uh. Uh, that's on Saturday, November eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Operation Green Light was, was started last year by the National Association of Counties. And it's a means of recognizing our vet, uh veterans. And by lighting up our court, our county buildings uh in green at night. And we, we purchased the bulbs and did that last year. Uh, however, the green light kinda fades into the stone of the courthouse, but you can still see it's green. So, uh, we would like to consider doing that again in twenty twenty-three. So, uh, uh, entertain a motion to approve uh participating in Operation Green Light.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Pearson.
All right. Uh, any discussions? All of the favors say aye.
Uh huh.
Opposed like sign. Motion passes. Uh, item number six, discuss, consider adding or removing members of the board of directors for the historical commission. And uh, we've got, uh, we received a letter from Linda Dennis at resigning from the board. And we have a letter asking to add Melissa Mays Gonzalez. Does the historical board wanna make any presentation? In that regard? Melissa, would you stand up so we know who we are talking about? She is asked to be involved, and, and my understanding, she's already been conscripted into work.
Absolutely. So. Here's, uh, having a visit. I felt out, um, the church and portraits of the hallway down this one day, which I'm years ago. And now I'm a president that I, uh, those who are getting above that.
Very good. We're, we're happy to have you aboard.
What precinct?
What precinct do you live in?
Four.
Four. That would be Commissioner Barton right here. So, uh, is there a motion to accept the resignation of Linda Dennis and to add Melissa Mays Gonzalez to the board of directors of the historical commission?
From another person.
All right.
Same.
All right, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Uh huh.
Opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number seven, discuss, consider resolution for the indigent defense grant program. Uh, I'll go so far explaining this, and I might have to get Sandy to help me out on it, but uh. Uh, indigent defense grant program requires a major amount of work on a report that we provide to them. We spend close to eight hundred thousand dollars a year, countywide, for indigent defense. And this grant program allows us to recoup some of that cost. Am I correct? Okay. So, uh, is there a motion to uh, uh, approve the resolution for indigent defense grant?
Motion.
All right, uh, Commissioner Barton made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Melton, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Uh huh.
Oppose like sign. Motion passes. Item number eight, discuss, consider resolution twenty-three thirty-nine with the city of Will's Point to update subdivision regulations. In the ETJ jurisdictions initially established was resolution oh-two oh-six, October two thousand two, following passage of Senate Bill twenty thirty-eight. And I will explain this best I can, and I get Pam to, uh, uh, city administrator, correct, with Will's Point? To help me out. Uh, the resolution in twenty, uh, in Oates, in October two thousand two. Said that uh, the ETJ is the extended territorial jurisdiction of a city outside of its city limits. And that's a certain range in which they have uh, the, uh, like first right of refusal to provide services or to annex at some point in time. And uh, in that uh, bill, that, that current, the earlier resolution two thousand two. It granted the city of Will's Point to uh, handle any subdivision plats within the ETJ. In other words, the county was not responsible for subdivision plats. The city was responsible for that. Because they could eventually annex that property again, and they would be ultimately responsible for it. Well, with Senate Bill twenty thirty-eight, which was passed in the last legislative session. The uh, the legislature now gives the ETJ people, uh, the people within the ETJ the right to petition. To be removed from the city's jurisdiction in that regard. So what that would inevitably do, evidently do is a subdivision developer could come in. Set up a uh, subdivision within the city's jurisdiction. City would have approved it. And then they could petition to be out of the ETJ, and then it would become the county's responsibility for that subdivision. And so what this resolution that the city of Will's Point has done is to make, or to allow the county to be responsible for subdivisions within the ETJ. So that uh, in the event that they, uh, so that uh, it will be under the county regardless of whether or not they asked to be uh, removed from the ETJ. So, did I get that right, Pam? Okay, so. And uh, kudos for, for Will's Point to, uh, well, I guess the new legislation. Made it, made a requirement to do that, and we probably have other cities that we have these resolutions that we'll be coming back to. Uh, and, and modifying them too. So, uh, that, that is what this new resolution is uh, that we are approving. Uh, so is there a motion to approve this resolution with the city of Will's Point?
Uh. There are most, so moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion.
Yes. So, uh, if the county takes it back over. What, what if it doesn't come up to our subdivision rules and regulations guidelines?
That's what you're protecting, uh, and not being able to come to the city and say, oh, we wanna be under the city's guidelines because they're not as stringent as the counties. And then they work through the city, and then has to be removed from the ETJ. So automatically, they're gonna be dealing with that.
Okay.
They will remove that from ever happening.
How does that affect current subdivisions within the ETJ?
That's already been established. And there, there may be one that we're working with at the time, that may have to be. Under the city, just because we've already started that, I'm not sure. We have attorneys involved in that.
Okay.
We'll see how that goes.
Man, wasn't there something passed recently where the county and cities must come together and agree on one subdivision rules and regulations?
Haven't seen that. I just know that this. Bill came out, and it was that it's set in reverse. It just keeps someone from playing the counties against the city.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's a deal.
And, you know, as a city, we haven't seen that struggle. So we've got to look at our subdivision guidelines, because we haven't even looked at those since the mid-eights. So I'm sure you are not as stringent and up to date as, as what you're saying.
This is, this is really a, a FYI on the city of Will's Point to us. Uh, I'm not sure. I'm not sure we even had to vote on it, because we, we have no say so in it. The, the city is relinquishing their authority within that ETJ that prior in two thousand and two, they sent a letter to us saying that they were gonna control that. We also have a letter from the city of Canton, interloble agreement, saying that the city of Canton handles everything, all subdivisions within the ETJ. We don't really have a say so on it, it's just strictly a city decision, and the city of Wells Point has decided. Because now, if you don't like what the city of Wells Points, if you're a developer and you don't like what the city says, you just say, okay, take me out of your ETJ, and it automatically falls back on us. So the city of Wells Point is just saying, okay, we're gonna turn it to the county. So now we'll be approving all plaits within the city of Wells Point's ETJ. And they won't, they won't even go to, any new developers won't even go to the city. So it'll be strictly under our.
And Pam, the ETJ is how far out from the city limits?
It's a half a mile.
Half a mile, all right.
And they're changing that as well. And if you think about a homegrown city, which is over five thousand, they can annex in within that ETJ. If you look at us, which is just five hundred general law, because we are under the five thousand, they have to voluntarily request to be annexed. So I think a lot of this is geared for the larger cities, this being able to be removed from the ETJ, because so many have extended their ETJ and annexing property. That has created some issues for people that wants to live in the county, that don't wanna be a part of that. So, that's, that's where I think it's coming from.
Okay. Any further discussion? Is there, oh, we're gonna motion, all those in favor of the resolution twenty-three thirty-nine with City of Wells Point, say aye, all opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number nine, discuss, to approve the twenty-twenty-three tax levy by Van Zant County Appraisal District. And this is basically just telling us what the total amount of tax levy is, which is twenty-two million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. Did you get that, David?
One more time.
Twenty-two million, two eighty, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. And the reason why that couldn't be determined at the time we passed the tax rate and all that, which goes, they were still in the process of determining what the actual price values were in the, in the county. And so, because of all the protests and all, so now, now that they've pretty much completed that, they have the total amount. So is there, is there a motion to approve the tax levy for the Van Zant County appraisal district?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number ten, discuss, consider salary correction for one of the DA's office employee. And our district attorney, Tom DeCury is up.
So, in the kind of last minute flurry of activity after we learned about Senate Bill twenty-two, and you all had what version of the proposed budget we were on at that point, that you all had issued a proposed budget that included salary figures from my office. When Senate Bill twenty-two, we learned how it was gonna work, I came back to you, said, take that money away, you'll keep that for another department, I'll give increases out of my Senate Bill twenty-two money. In doing all that last minute, trying to hit the figures right, I inadvertently left out one account that I had previously, one of my investigators supplement from, investigative, my lead investigator, had always received a supplement out of forfeiture. When I submitted the, the, the budget and the Senate Bill twenty-two numbers and all of that, I forgot to include that supplement from it. So it actually would have resulted in less money this year. So all I'm asking for is seven thousand dollars, and for to the, not you all for us to spend on forfeiture. This is the only time I have to ask you all for approval to spend on forfeiture's money for salary. Seven thousand dollars on forfeiture from bill of forfeiture to the users who have previous users.
I'm not a person.
All right, motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, any discussion? So, there's really, you're just moving from one to the other, correct? There's no change in the budget per se?
It's the budget, it's just.
Where it's coming from.
Yeah, so forfeiture money will be used, right now, investigative brokers think that is not what it should be for that first pay period of the budget year. But, so it will authorize me to spend seven thousand dollars on the forfeiture only, not taxpayer money, forfeiture only, to supplement his salary like, like it was last year, and I believe me.
Okay.
There, there's a change in the bu- budget, but it offset itself, it's gonna come out her fund, showing this budget, and then we're gonna pay it.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Yeah. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number eleven, discuss, consider reestablishing six hundred and seventy feet of the dead end road on Van Zant County Road twenty-two zero six.
Judge Commissioners, this was a piece of a dead end road, six hundred and seventy feet in length on twenty-two oh-six, that was formerly abandoned about seven years ago in this court. Whereas the petitioner, Jonathan Pino, now requests that the six hundred and seventy feet length road of Van Zant County twenty-two oh-six be reestablished as a non-maintained section of the road. Whereas state law provides in section two-five-one point oh-five-seven of the Texas Transportation Code, abandonment of county road, that an abandoned, abandoned road may be reestablished as a public road only in the manner provided for reestablishing a new road. But if you go to, workforce state law provides in section two-five-one point oh-five-two of the Texas Transportation Code, public application for a new road are changed to see, the commissioners court may grant a petition if the applicant gives notice of their intent by posting at the courthouse door and at two other places in vicinity of the affected route, a written notice of their intent for at least twenty days before the commissioners court hears a petition. Whereas the written notice petition was posted on September the twentieth, twenty-three, at the required locations. So I'm gonna make a motion that we do reestablish, accept the reestablishing the six hundred and seventy feet length of the dead end road on Van Zant County Road twenty-two oh-six.
All right, motion been made, is there a second?
Second.
All right, further discussion? Not all those in favor say aye, opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number twelve, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, person.
There's a second.
Second.
Motion been made and second to adjourn, and all of the favors say aye, and we are adjourned at nine twenty-three. Thank you all for attending our meeting today. No, I was trying to copy, so I think I need to do it. She, she, you know, in the minutes, because there's other, other things.
Hey. At least the right street that isn't gonna stay on.
All right. Do you get all that? All right, thank you so much. I'm gonna be on my call later, get back.
Good to see you all.
I didn't notice it during the meeting.
Congratulations, Melissa. Thank you for doing.
Good, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you very much. Brandon?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Hello, I'm sorry. I got three things going on. Okay, all right, y'all both in, Ben Wheeler? They in?
David, I got corrections for your article. I got some corrections for your article.
On what?
On the Monday, the Monday commissioner court meeting.
Okay.
We have no fire department in Walton.
Okay.
Okay.
And did he say that though?
No, he did, but then he said not Walton, he corrected.
So there's no fire.
There's no fire department in Walton, and also David King was the president. At least, last I knew, he was the president of American National Bank.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, don't, don't worry about it.
Okay, I'll, I'll get that, you know, Walton. Before it goes into the major use.
Okay.
I'll get that there here. Brandon? You're coming east on Friday?
Yeah.